Board of Education in order. This is the regular meeting for the month of November for the Linden Board of Education. And as usual, I would like to invite all of you to rise and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, a statement of adequate notice.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting was provided as follows: On January 12th, July 13th, and November 8th, 2020, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, local source, and the clerk of the municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time.
Thank you. I'd like to remind that in addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon all the items not specifically referred to here herein as allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the sunshine law. Roll call, please.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
I'm sorry, President.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Ms. Thomas?
President.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Here.
Ms. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Rebus?
Present.
I'd like to ask for motion to the approval of minutes of the work session held on October 26, 2021, and the regular minute held on October 28, 2021, which copies are in the hands of the Board of Members. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, with a motion on the floor and being second, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. Gilliam?
We're approving...
The minutes.
October 26th, work session, and the 28th, the regular meeting.
Oh, okay. So I don't believe I was here on the 26th, so I've seen...I had a death in the family.
Sorry, I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Rebus?
Yes. Yeah, that's on the agenda, let's just follow the agenda. Thank you for the clarification. At this time, I'd like to invite comments from the public on agenda items topics, member of the public desiring to make a public comment. Make and come forward at this time. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and individuals will speak more than once. All individuals so desired have spoken. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient or orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking of items for three minutes, and if by a chance, your time may go over, that I'm going to track with my phone, I will be advising you if you are looking for an extension of the time so you can finish your presentation. Any members of the public who would like to make comments about the agenda topics, you are invited to come to the podium front.
I'm just following this one.
No, no.
With no members of the public, I wanted to make any comments about the agenda topics, I would like to invite our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge two retirements in this report. As you know, I just gave a report about an hour ago. But we would like to congratulate and thank two of our retirees. Mr. Frank Bandinelli, who started in 1999 as a crisis intervention aide for the Linden Board of Education. In 2001, Mr. Bandinelli taught high school social studies for seven years, and then in 2018 was appointed as vice principal at the high school and is currently the vice principal at McManus Middle School. Thank you, Mr. Bandinelli, for your passion and dedication to the students and families in Linden. The Linden Board of Education wish you all the best, enjoy your retirement. Our second retiree, Ms. Susan Bush. She has worked for the Linden Public Schools for the past 16 years as a paraprofessional. Ms. Bush has worked at Schools 1, 10, McManus, and is currently at Linden High School. Ms. Bush, thank you for your passion and dedication to students and families here in Linden. The Linden Board of Education wish you all the best in your next chapter, and enjoy your retirement. With that, Mr. Board President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, we're going to move now to the discussion on approval on educational reports. Ms. Clear?
Thank you, Mr. Rebus. The Education Committee has the following motions. Number one is to approve the enrollment of students in out-of-district placements. Number two is to approve the termination of students in out-of-district placements. Number three is for the payment of related services as per child study team evaluations. Number four is to approve the termination of related services as per child study team evaluations. Number five approves the adjustment of tuition as per the NJ DOE audit. Number six is amendment on past education reports. Some of them are amounts, some of them are dates, changes that were necessary. Number seven is to approve curriculum writing as listed. Number eight is to approve, grant permission for the following use of facilities and school activities at various schools throughout the district for different events. Number nine is to approve following activity for Mrs. Hori, the marching band banquet coming up in January. Number 10 is to approve district field trips. Number 11 is to approve training for district staff. And as per a discussion in committee last week, we have noted some of the staff members, their attendance at conferences contingent upon the acceptance of their proposals. Number 12 is to approve professional development activities for Soul Middle School and its Title I programs. Number 13, this one Dr. Hazleton has spoken about and discussed in committee last week, this is to approve the staff members to attend and accept the National ESEA Award, Distinguished School Award, and that is for the School Five staff.
And I'd like to say we added this after committee because the attendees have to make their travel and reservations.
Number 14 is to approve courses through ediscier for students to make their graduation requirements. Number 15 is to approve Linden residents to participate in the inter-district public school choice program. These are students who just have notified us of their intent to apply to choice districts. Number 16 is to approve before-school tutoring at School Number Eight. Number 17 grants permission for Title I virtual tutoring at McManus Middle School. Number 18 is to accept the course description guides for elementary, middle, and high school levels. Number 19 is to approve a program that will be held between McManus-Soul and Linden High School. It's the Pretty Brown Girl Empowerment Club, and that's paid for out of grant monies. Number 20 is to approve the 2020-2021 school self-assessment for determining grades under anti-bullying Bill of Rights Act. Number 21 is to grant permission for a student from Rutgers University to complete her occupational therapy practicum in our schools. Number 22 is to grant permission to prepare and submit the preschool program plan update, that's for our preschool funding. Number 23 is to grant permission to submit the APR-ESR application, that's the latest monies we are getting from the federal government. Number 24 is to grant permission for our nursing students from St. Elizabeth University to complete observations within our schools. And number 25 is to approve the superintendent's determination for harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. All members, any questions for discussion before we can proceed to vote on the approval of the items in the educational report?
For number 11, Ms. Clear, you said it's contingent upon if certain teachers were requested to...
Yes, there were some of our teachers submitted proposals to present at Expo. We have not received that information, whether they've been accepted or not yet. So we had to put this in the agenda because it is January, and we don't have another meeting to approve that prior. So their attendance is contingent upon the acceptance of their proposals. That was discussed at committee.
Okay, thank you.
Following that question, during committee, we saw seven names of seven teachers that were added to this particular Expo conference, and we discussed that with the shortage of teachers, we need a teacher in schools, because we wanted to make sure that our childrens are being taught. The question is that I have seen that it had been added an asterisk saying attendance at conference contingent upon a set of proposal, but only three or four of them have the asterisk. What it means that the other teachers have received a set of proposals as of now?
No, the others, one, those are the four that submitted for proposals. The one other is a person from IT. One other is for, one is for the day, and the other one is for a day also as an administrator at the high school.
But that means that we're still paying registration, we're still going through the same expenses, if it's a day or a three-day. Is that correct? We're still paying the same thing for registration and for expenses, even if they go for a day or three days?
Well, for a day, the registration cost is lower for the day, and there's no expenses.
But that is quite not necessarily specified here. And the reason that I said this is because we have been going over and over again. We don't even have substitutes on our schools. We have nine leaders of a district, including a principal, that is heading to this Expo with the intentions to come back, restrain the trainers, to pass the information to our teachers, and now we're adding seven. Seven teachers to go to an Expo are waiting for the acceptable proposal, so that means that it's not even, and correct me, because I could be wrong, it's not even the conference asking them to go, it's them asking the conference, I want to present. Is this correct? Because according to what I read, upon a set of proposals, so I mean that they send a proposal to present.
They submitted, two of them are with Apple, that Apple is presenting, and there are Apple coaches to the teachers, and then two of them created their own proposal based on their work with Canvas, the learning management system, to present.
All right. I have really concerns, having to not have teachers on the schools, I would leave for the board members to make their own decisions, but we know that our schools need the teachers in our classrooms. I know that we are waiting for proposals, but our teachers should not even be proposing to go. We need it in our classrooms. That's what we needed to add. And I know that this is not necessarily against giving a teacher the opportunity to train and be trained and learned, because that's part of the rights that they have. But in the circumstances that we are, we need teachers in our classrooms, and that is just my comment as I made those questions. Any members have any other questions regarding the educational report?
I mean, this is a concern. How do we even move forward if we need the teachers in the classroom, but we're waiting for their proposal to be responded to? What happens if it's not? What happens if...
They don't go.
So my understanding on the committee meeting is that the conference asked them to go. What this is presenting is that they're asking the conference, I want to go to present. Ladies and gentlemen, colleagues, board members, the decision is yours, but we need teachers on our school classrooms, especially if we're shortage. Now, I'm asking, I am asking the conference to go. I leave to the district leaders to understand that our role here is to look out for the education of our children, and for that, we need teachers. Ms. Gilliam?
Two questions. First question is, if they don't get approved to be a speaker or presenter at the Expo, we could always amend the agenda, correct, or no?
That's the reason why that was put in, so that contingency was put in there. So if the proposal, if they're not speaking at the conference, then they do not go.
Okay. And my next question is, some of the teachers are coaches, correct, or no? Are they all just regular teachers?
No, in this case, the four that are us are teachers.
Mr. Schultz is not a coach?
No, he is not.
Okay, thank you.
Do they have backup? Who's their backup in case they do get chosen?
There would be a substitute.
Be a substitute teacher. Do we have enough substitute teachers?
It looks like we don't.
Depends on the day.
Depends on the day.
Now, Ms. Clear, the three members who does not have an asterisk, they say they're going for a day.
The two of them are, had put in for the one day, and the other was for the full conference. He's one of our network engineers.
So if we said that, if we said on the committee meetings that we will make an adjustment for them to go to present, what would they not have an asterisk? What is so important for them to go? When we have leaders that are going to go to the conference and they're going to come back to teach our teachers and to pass the information that they have learned?
They were submitted, their principals said that they gave them, asked them to submit to go, to bring back the information, so that was it, so.
So this is going against what we saw, we saw on the committee meeting, all right?
When we talked about it in the board meetings, I mean, I'm sorry, when we talked about it in...
Committee.
Committee meetings, it was a great opportunity for Linden to represent as a whole. However, the question wasn't raised then, if there's no teachers. This is a great opportunity for Linden to go, and a great opportunity for the teachers and staff to be able to go to this. However, if we don't have a substitute teacher, this is a no-brainer, then you can't go.
So can I just share with you the process in approving professional development? So classroom teachers and subordinates, they would submit their requests for attendance to a professional development conference to the building principal, building principal or the supervisor. In the case of someone who is a tech, they would submit their request to their immediate supervisor, and so that supervisor would then determine whether or not the conference or the professional development is important enough for that person to attend and then come back and turnkey the information. So that would be the chain, and then it would go on to the assistant superintendent to place on the agenda. So I say all that to say that the building principals that signed off on the request of these teachers, they should have been able to forecast, okay, what am I going to do during the one, two, or three days that this person is gone to cover the classroom? But I agree, we are short of staff members and substitute teachers. However, professional development must continue, especially since we are one-to-one Apple District. We could take a look at how many supervisors are attending, and also how they will turnkey that information, and so that we're not oversaturating this conference with Linden employees. I do support those that are in tech, those that are in the classrooms as, or in the buildings, as technology teachers. From my understanding, I've never attended this conference, but from my understanding and speaking with superintendent colleagues, this is one of the premier conferences of the year in the state of New Jersey. And so it is beneficial for school districts to have representatives there to not only see the latest and greatest in instructional technology, but also infrastructure and hardware. We know that technology changes literally daily. You know, your iPad will be outdated in a matter of years, if not months, the way technology is constantly speeding ahead. So that's just a little background information.
So just a quick question. So, because we want everybody to be able to go, right? This is what we all want. We all want, as a whole, to, you know, do this great thing. My question is this: What is the backup plan if we don't have a teacher or we don't have a substitute for a classroom and that teacher is gone?
That's a good question.
That is the responsibility of the building principal. So if you're in a building that I'm running and you request to go on a professional development, as that building leader, I have to have a contingency plan, whether I'm going to collapse the class, whether or not I'm going to secure one of our permanent substitutes. It cannot just be, I'll deal with it or worry about it when the situation comes. There has to be a plan to cover those classrooms. How many classrooms will be impacted? And do you know the grades off the top of your head by the names or the people on this list?
These are, two of them are elementary, which they are the elementary tech teachers. So for that day, when one of the specials is not there, then the students stay with their regular teacher for that time period. Two of them are the middle school teachers, so that would require a substitute to take the, or someone to cover their classes for the day.
Dr. Hazleton, I have a question. Doesn't these requirements have a time limit to be presented? Because we discussed this last month. How is it that, if we discussed it last month and we knew about this conference and the requirements, we are now bringing more people into this meeting? I thought everything has a timeframe, a timeline.
Well, until the registration closes, but I do agree with you, there needs to be a system here. In previous districts, we completed a professional development forum, and part of that forum, the top half of the page, you had to explain the benefits of, the benefits to you as a professional and the benefits to the district as to why you need to attend certain PDs or conferences. I would like to bring something like that back. I did not see these new names until this agenda was created. So if there's a timeline, if there is a conference, then all names should go on at one time, so it's not trickled or piecemealed, so we're not going to have, so we don't have this conversation. And it's a valid conversation. So if there's a conference, we determine as building leaders and as supervisors, who's going to go, what is going to be the benefit for each building and for the district, and then determine how many people we're going to allow to move forward and go to that professional development. Because it does answer a lot of questions. What are the people going to do that the people who were approved last month, what is going to be their role at the conference? And now, we have a new batch, what is going to be their role? So I understand the questions, and I think we need to put systems in place to avoid future conversations like this, so that when the board does ask the question, we can say, this is going to be the benefit, this is why this person is going, and then the expected expenditures are listed and then signed off by the immediate supervisor, and then lastly, the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Hazleton.
And also for backup, if, because you could say, oh, well, we have two substitutes, we have exactly two substitutes. Well, what's the contingency plan? Somebody gets sick, then is there, do we still pay the cost for that person? Is there a refund? Do we get refunded? Because you pay for that upfront, right?
Yeah, usually you don't. If you have, you have to cancel within a certain amount of time, or you lose the registration.
Oh, the registration, and then you have to do your due diligence to notify them that you're backing out of even doing that training for everybody, like, there are things that should be contingency plans for quite a few things for next time.
How much longer will, you know, these teachers got approved to present?
I'm hoping that, they said probably the beginning of December, so it should be coming out soon.
Okay. Any questions before we can make a motion to approve?
What's the deadline for registration?
I don't know, what is, does anyone know the Expo deadline for registration? I'll let you know, I'll go online.
And then also, along with us waiting for proposal approval, can we also request that we find out if the classrooms that need substitutes will be...
If they have coverage for that?
Yes.
What is unfairly, board members, is that we are not meeting in December. What is unfair is that in January, we're going to go to a restructuring of a board. We're going to get new board members that are coming in. What is unfair is that we may not even have time to go back to this before, bless you, before we meet again in January, and that's the part that makes it difficult for many of us who have shared some concern. In any event, in order to allow the meeting to continue, allow me to be the first person to make a motion to, well, no, I am going to wait for the committee chairman to perhaps make a motion to have these agenda items approved, disapproved, abstained. Chairman?
Education Committee.
Hold on, hold on.
I can answer Ms. Thomas's question. It looks like it's a rolling registration, it doesn't have a deadline. I know some conferences, you can register up until the day of, you just pay the daily rate, or if it's a two, three-day conference. So this doesn't look like it has a deadline, but you can probably register the day of if there's space available.
But if you're doing the training, they have to set you in on the agenda, though, right?
Yeah, that's for someone, they accept the proposal. So on their web, call for proposal is now open, but it's, the link is not opening. So the call for proposal is most likely closed.
Yes.
But to register for the conference, this looks like you can do day of.
But we're not sending anybody that's not training, so that wouldn't apply.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
So the only people that we're sending from the employees are the people who are training?
But superintendent, I'm not presenting, I'm going down with other superintendent colleagues. I've never attended this conference, and from my understanding from NJ SA, the superintendents go down and they take a look at new instructional practices and different infrastructure. The other people that you approved last board agenda in October are going down for various reasons. You have your two directors of technology, one for instructional, one for infrastructure. Did that answer your question?
No, it just confused me. I really am not trying to draw this meeting out. But didn't you go to this last month? We approved this last month?
Yeah.
You went.
It hasn't happened yet. It hasn't happened yet. It hasn't happened yet.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, I thought that had already happened, my apologies.
My question. I know we don't have a meeting next month, and we don't have, we have a reorg meeting when we come. Is there, as a recommendation, to try to give these teachers the opportunity, and if they get selected from here to January 6th, obviously, when we meet again, maybe we could have a little special side to vote on this, on the teachers that we are questioning about? And hopefully, we have a clearer picture and who's backing them up, because at least we might get a clearer picture as it gets closer to the time, as opposed to a month and a half in advance.
I don't know what time is the, what time is the, we haven't even decided when it's going to be our next monthly meeting on January, so it's hard to say.
It will have to be January, before January 26th, obviously.
But we haven't decided yet.
Okay.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
President?
Okay, just by looking at the addition of, first, I'd like to apologize for my lateness, I did have a plumbing emergency at my home, which prevents me from coming. Again, just by, you know, looking at the names of the additional teachers, I know personally the elementary teachers that are in charge of technology in the elementary department, who are in charge of specific schools and bringing back and relaying that information to the teachers in the classrooms, and they've done that throughout the entire pandemic. They're very, very dedicated, they're very knowledgeable, they are the teachers that have brought the Apple certification to our schools, and it's very important that we do allow our teachers to have the opportunity within elementary and middle school level to be able to bring back. It's not just the supervisors, but these teachers are hands-on. They're hands-on in the classroom, they're hands-on with fixing things, with providing information, with providing a lot of these, you know, teaching classes to, you know, to the teachers in their schools, and they travel from school to school. So there's different levels of people, obviously, within, you know, the realm of doing things. And I understand where you're coming from, but I don't, personally, because I know who these teachers are, I don't feel that it would be a disservice to not having them in the classroom for that day or those few days. It would actually be a disservice to our district by not allowing them to go, because they're very, very valuable, and the information that they gain, especially at this conference, which is like the main conference, is just phenomenal. And bringing back, and it just helps us to be better, you know, and anything that can help us be better is something that's worth, you know, proving and allowing. and allowing. You know, that's just my personal opinion.
Thank you for those comments. Thank you very much for those comments. Any other comments before the first and not committee chair?
I have a question. When you receive, this is really not for the board, it's for Ms. Cleary. The backup that we send home to the board when we request to attend out-of-state professional development or attend these conferences, do we give a packet with information describing the benefits and what will go on during the conference? Is that done here?
No, we have not done that.
Okay. And, because I'm looking online and I see something from the interim, the Acting Commission of Education. So I am committed to revising this whole process so that conversations like this take place in committee and the board has all of the documentation, the why, the benefit, the cost, and then what would be the contingency plan while that person is out. I think that will make for a smoother approval or non-approval, because you have more information as to the importance of whatever professional development or conference is coming up.
I just want to, if I may, we did discuss all of that in committee and we had all agreed that this was a great thing, except for the point of not having backup. That's what we discussed, that it was a great opportunity, but we were sending too many people. And now that I realize, that I didn't realize before, is that what, the people that we approved last month, along with this list, are all going and we don't know if we'll have backup. That's the question. Not that it's good for, or, because it's supposed to be a great deal. This is a huge opportunity. So that's not the question. The question is, do we have somebody to sit in the classrooms with our students? That boils down to exactly that. Do we have?
And I just want to, I want to clarify that, yes, in the committee meeting, it was discussed that the benefit is great. The challenge is to look out for our children.
Yes.
As well as we respect the training that our teachers need to go to look out for our children. And what it really surprised me is that if we were going to discuss on some sort of approver, all of these people that were added were subject to be approved by the expo to be presenters.
Yep.
So my concern was that I only see some and not all of them. So that was not what was discussed on the committee meeting.
Mr. Reavis?
Yes.
May I ask a question? I know we have been discussing this for, this is a second board meeting, we have been discussing this. From Tuesday to now, we got seven more people added to the list.
From October, from October.
Seven more, right? So my concern is, is that we don't even know at the next meeting, we're going to get more people added to the list.
No, you won't. No, you won't.
So you guys, this is it.
Yeah, I can assure you, no, you won't.
So this is my concern. If this continues to roll the way it is, making a decision now is premature, because we do not know what's going to happen between now, as, you know, as my colleague Sam said, that.
In a way.
It may be premature in the decision right now.
In a way, I believe you're right. The unfortunate is that we do not yet know when our next meeting in January is. We cannot go up and try to make a resolution on something that we don't know. And I believe, and I'm going to ask for some consultation with a counselor here, if it was something decided on committee and it appears to be different, how can I, do we motion to go back over what was decided on committee? Or how do we work in this particular aspect on committee? Was in this particular topic that all these teachers that were added, if we were going to approve it, they would need to receive the certification or the acceptance from the expo that they were going to present, they're going to be presenters. Today, the agenda shows to be different and four of them have that particular statement added to it, but three of them not. So how do we do to go back to what was being resolved in committee? Or either we, it is a change of the agenda?
I'm not sure I understand the question, but let me try. Anything that's done in the committee is non-binding. So it's, it doesn't, you're not forced to vote a certain way because you said something in a committee meeting. If you're asking me, can you amend what's on this agenda to reflect what you may have discussed in committee? You can do that with a motion and a second to amend what's on there. But I'm not sure, again, I'm not sure if that was the question or if you were asking me what you're supposed to do because you might have agreed to certain things.
I think you answered my question and that's the reason, how we will proceed to try to go back to what was agreed on committee.
I mean, there are two ways to do it. You can amend what's on here now or you can call the vote. If the vote fails with this particular issue, you can make a motion, a revised motion that reflects what it is that you were willing to approve. And if you get a second, you can call the vote on that issue. So there are two different ways to do it.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the committee members for education that you were part of the agenda, if there is, within your understanding, that is anything to be done with this particular item. As our counselor had provided a guidance, there are two ways to do it. Either we place it to a vote and if the vote doesn't go the way that we thought that we should be, as is discussed there, we can also, at that time, amend the agenda item or we can amend the agenda item before we can go to vote. And I will ask that for the discussion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a proposal that we vote to approve the, to approve the extra people with the contingency, that there would be substitutes found for them. So if there's not substitutes found for them, I mean, is that?
Dr. Hazleton and I actually discussed that exact issue. I made the same suggestion you did, why don't we make it contingent? But I'll let Dr. Hazleton speak on it. We might not know if we have substitutes.
We won't know until the day of.
Of the day of the actual conference.
Because other teachers could be out that day due to sickness or anything else. So you don't know until the morning of the school day, how many substitutes you will need. We can anticipate and forecast.
That's what I'm saying, our subs right now, we don't sign up ahead of time for days? It's the same day?
We have permanent subs, but however, we, right now, that we're in the holiday season, there's an uptick in absenteeism. So that's day today. I can project next week that I have a certain amount of teachers going out to professional development and I will need X amount of teachers, but I cannot predict next Monday, how many of our teachers or admins get sick on Sunday and don't come in. So that changes the plan tremendously. You see, we can forecast, we can do that, but anything could change on the drop of a dime, especially with COVID. If someone has to go into quarantine or go up a bit, they get COVID, now you have to prioritize, okay, we have this bank of substitute teachers that we intended to cover the people that are going to Tech Expo. However, we have a teacher that is out sick, got sick the night before, and we have a class that is a priority that needs coverage, especially our young babies. So a lot of things could happen. It changes on the drop of a dime depending on what's going on.
All right. For the respect of the time of the people, I will now ask the chairman of the education report if it's anything that she would like to recommend.
Mr. Reavis, can I just interrupt a second? Dr. Berghammer and Ms. Thomas, could you just move your mics closer to you? I can't hear you to take them. I'm sorry. No, they should be in front of you. They're over to the side. I'll get up and move them if you want.
No, 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 I'm fine.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Is this better?
That's much better, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Reavis.
Regarding the, you know, I'm an educator. I spent the last, oh God, for so many years in education. And I'm always conscious of listening to the people. And I stood here and I heard other, other members of the public stood right there and talk about how important this training is. But I also have, and I believe that the members of the public is correct by stating the training and professional development for staff is important. But then on the other hand, I also have the concern that we are going to be left without students in the classroom, because there's so many people going and, you know, we can't even foresee what could occur during this time. So on one hand, I would love everybody to go. On the other hand, I am concerned that we could have empty classrooms. So I am lost, actually. Some, I'm never really lost, but today.
Dr. Berghammer.
Can I make a motion?
Dr. Berghammer, what I was trying to do, I was trying to share the leadership of the board as you as the chairman of the committee, but you don't have to do it. I mean, every member can make a motion. So I really understand where you're coming from. Ms. Fleming?
I would like to make a motion to amend that if you do not, if you don't have backup to substitute your class and only if you're training, like we discussed, and.
Meaning that they have to present?
Yeah, if you are presenter and you have backup, those are the only employees that can go at this time, because we're short employees.
Thank you, Ms. Jennifer Fleming. There is a motion on the floor to amend the item on the educational report in reference to the addition of seven teachers, addition of seven teachers attending the Tech Expo to reflect that they are subject to go only if they are.
A trainer.
Accepting those proposals to present and if there is enough coverage on the day of the training. Is that what you're asking, Ms. Fleming?
Yes, sir, thank you.
I have a question really quick. Are there some that are on this list that doesn't have an asterisk nearby their name? Because I only see two that has asterisks.
That's what I was referring before, that didn't have the asterisk. So we can note it. Do you want to know the person that doesn't have the?
It's four with the asterisks, right?
It's four with the asterisk. I think three with no asterisks. If we go over them, the people with the asterisks are number five, number 12, number 21. And 24. And then the people with no asterisks are 29, 25.
Mr. Happel, if I'm correct.
And number 10.
And can you remind us what the asterisk is?
The asterisk is subject to.
On page 13?
Is what it says in the, in the small letters, in the small letters, the, what you're proposing.
Yes.
Are you proposing, now we have the second portion of, if we have a substitute for them?
All right. So there is a motion on the floor. There has been second. I'm going to open for discussion. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, can you just clarify again? The asterisks are, I thought they were just the extra people, but are they presenters?
The asterisks are waiting to, their proposal to present to be approved.
Okay.
So if they are, as well as the others, approved to be presenter, the motion asks they are allowed to go, also with the subject to coverage.
Coverage, they get coverage. So we don't, in case we don't short any one class.
Right, thank you. And I have some updated information, thank you, on the registration policy. All registrations must be received no later than Wednesday, January the 5th, 2022, to avoid a late charge. On-site registration will be available for a $50 up charge. The conference badge is your admittance to the exhibit hall. So they can register, like I said, day of, but it's an additional $50. It'll cost you more than the current.
Thank you, Dr. Hazleton.
Mrs. Cleary, you did say that there were only certain teachers on here that would need coverage. Do you know how many?
The, of the four teachers who submitted the proposals, two of them are special elective teachers for the elementary school. So if they had coverage, it's fine, but if they don't, they just remain with their classroom teacher that day. So it's not as though they're left without a teacher for the day. And then the other two are middle school teachers, so they have full schedule, so they would need coverage.
All right. Board members, I ask if there's any discussion about the motion presented by Jennifer Fleming. Secretary, with no discussion, there's a motion on the floor to amend.
I second.
Amend the items on the education agenda, item 11, for the names in place number five, number 10, number 12, number 21, number 24, number 25, and number 29, to say that they are contingent upon accepting of their proposal to present and coverage to attend the expo. Roll call, please.
Who's, do I have a, is there a second?
Dr. Berghammer.
Um, Dr. Berghammer. Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Reavis?
Yes. Thank you, board members. I think that we have now placed an amendment on the agenda item. And with that, if there is no other questions about the education report, I'll ask the chairman of the educational report to make a motion.
I speak it now. I make it note, I approved the education report, items one to 25 with amendments.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Reavis?
Yes, but I abstain on number 20, on item 11, number 23. Thank you, board members. Let's continue with the following committee, is the finance report.
Items one through five are regular business. Number six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 are acceptance of funds from the various sources as stated. Number 13 is to approve a contract for the HAC upgrades for the paid through the American Rescue Plan, the ESER grant. Number 14 is submission of the ESEA 2021 carryover amendment to the ESEA grant for, as listed. Number 15 is enrollment for students to come to school on a tuition basis, pending enrollment. Number 16 is the submission of the district report of transported resident pupils. Number 17 is to accept the draft audit and approve the corrective action plan as follows. And number 18 is to declare the following items as surplus.
Thank you. Board members, any questions to the items presented in the finance report?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For number two on, I'm sorry, number 36 on, I'm sorry, I'm getting mixed up. Number 17 on page 36, item two. When the auditor was here and he presented his report, he, I believe he discussed some funds that we had available specifically for cafeteria staff. But I know that he also mentioned, we also receive additional funding so that all of our students can have free lunch next year or this school year. Will that remain the same or will students have to pay for their lunch if they don't qualify?
At this time, they're all free. I don't know if after we get out of COVID that it'll change, but for right now, it's all free.
Thank you.
Board members, more questions? I do have a question. Item 13, approved contracts with architects. Item 13, approve contracts with architects for the HB projects using American Rescue Plan ESER grant money. I believe in May of this year, the board approved a motion to authorize the Linden Board to hire architects when we have projects that the school needs to fulfill. And this is an item that was already approved, unless we could go back on something different. And it even says the architects that we are to approve for these projects not to see $300,000. I don't have a problem with that. I mean, any resolution of the board, prior, priority, is something that we all look to respect. The problem that I have is that we are, according to what I remember, on the conversation with the director of grant, we have about $6.5 million to do HVAC upgrades in our schools. And we are here being asked to hire these architects to look at the work of two schools. By the way, I think that these two schools deserve, deserve the upgrades, but I also think that the rest of our schools deserve the upgrades. So if we're going to spend almost $300,000, $220,000,000 to be exact, on architects, hiring them so they can look for two schools, wouldn't it be better if we spend less than $300 for architects to look at the possibility to use this money to do upgrades in more than two schools in the city of Linden? So my question is, why do we need to, and by the way, the director of grant even advised me that while this money is for sure to arrive to a board as for the application that she is filled up and filling up and completing it, what is the rush to hire these architects right now when we believe that with many questions that we have in regards to the maintenance of the schools, we may not even take extra time and previous conversations that we have, and I'm going to quote a recommendation from the superintendent to create a committee to start looking out for the, how we can use this money for, to benefit more children. So my question is, why do we need to hire them so fast to do these jobs in school four and school five?
Well, it's, can I answer?
Yeah.
Oh, it's not so fast. It takes at least two years to put a project together. We have $6 million, which sounds like a lot, but that's only enough to do these two buildings. We looked at all the different schools and in order to do, it's, it's, it's so much per classroom because it's all rewiring and re, and they have to cut the outside of the building to insert because we want to do air conditioning now and not just ventilation. That's all we could do for $6 million.
And?
Just those two.
So if I may do a follow-up question, how do we got to those findings? By, by, by a counselor, by a consultant, by...
Architect.
By architect that we have already hired for this?
He is our, they are our architect of records, and when we have an architectural question, we contact them.
Okay.
Originally, I talked to Dr. Hazen, we thought we could do the high school. We can only do one floor of the high school, and that would cause a major problem if one floor has air conditioning totally and the others don't.
And this is...
That's why these schools were picked, because those, we could do those two.
And this is only looking at, I am not an expert on this, but this is looking at to make construction that will include making new lines of air conditioning to go there, like a mayor, mayor construction, the building that perhaps only can be done in the summer when there's no children in school.
Correct, well, correct, that's true. And that's the problem with a lot of the facilities upgrades that need to be done. The kids can't be in the school. Because this is a major, this isn't just putting units on the roof. This is a major duct work and because the school, as, school five is so old, school four was chosen because half of that building is already air conditioned from another facility project. So this is all we could get because we thought, you know, we could, but it's, it's, it's over $60,000 a classroom.
No, understandable, but again, I having a little bit of problem to understand that there are so many cafeterias here that don't have air conditioning.
I'm sorry, we're still, we're, we're doing them out of our own capital project money. This is additional. This is in addition to what we have. We're continuing with our plan to air condition cafeterias and the large areas. That's a plan that we do internally, that we're going year to year, like the bathrooms. This is a new project.
And this money can only be using HABC as for the director of grants, it cannot be used...
Yes, well, they, they say in the grant that they want us to do for ventilation in schools.
Ventilation, ventilation, correct. But understandably so, $6.5 million is, may have not sound as a lot, but many board members here have hear that in order to create these capital projects, we need to take money out of our reserve money, that we have not done that because we have not decided to take money out of the capital projects, that we have $6.5 million and instead to fully upgrade to schools, we can start with things that are really necessary and they're still part of the HBC ventilation system. I guess we should give priorities. Priorities, instead of not completing a school four or school five, let's complete first without having any type of challenge from our reserve money that by the way, we might use for any other capital projects, to put a not expedition order to have our cafeterias, all of our cafeterias at least with air conditioning. And we heard in an area like this, just going crazy, it could cost us half a million dollars or a million dollars. I mean, if that's the case, we can do six cafeterias, $6.5 million. So my question is...
Do we need to do six cafeterias?
Though we, can, can we, can we, can we go back and brainstorm and try to utilize on things that are really urgent? I think this is urgent. Cafeterias for our children is urgent, I didn't...
Well, how many caf, can we find out how many cafeterias are not...
That is something that I will ask the issue, but in regards to approving bullet number 13, I think we're rushing into just putting all of eggs on one basket when we can perhaps, you said with many different baskets, on things that are really, 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 really urgent, that will benefit more children. Perhaps not all of the schools will have air conditioning, but all the cafeterias will have air conditioning, at least they can have their lunches in, in, in an area that they can be, feel proud of it being. That was, that is just my, my comment about it.
Okay, let me just add for you to think about, so the cafeteria, large space in the building, the, the students are there no longer than 45 minutes to eat. So I would ask the board to think about children in hot classrooms for six hours while trying to learn. I understand the need to have equity among all of the buildings and have them all air conditioned, but with the $6 million, we would be, correct me if I'm wrong, we would be able to air condition the entire building.
Yes.
School four, school five. It is an ongoing process, so we, we're not, we're not going to be able to hit everyone at the same time with the same thing. I just wanted to add that to the conversation for people to think about as well. It's, school five in August, September, extremely, extremely hot and difficult to learn under those conditions versus eating in a classroom, a class, I'm sorry, eating in a cafeteria for no more than, let's say, 40 minutes.
That is correct, Dr. Hazen, and I totally understand where you're coming from, but there are many, there are many schools, like the school four, the school number four that came here present to us. They use the cafeteria for many of their events. Now, we're going back to approving a lot of events in our board agendas that they, our children's perform in these areas. It is up to the board. Again, that was just my comment, it's up to the board to discuss the matter, either to have, entertain the comments on that, but that was just my concern about it. How can we take some extra time, and I'm only asking to brainstorm and look at what are the best option to use this money?
Going back to, going back to the air conditioning in the gym and in the cafeteria, which I understand, if that's already in the pro, project plan, all our cafeterias and gyms are already in our plans. So wouldn't it be the same thing as, because they can work while the kids are in school? So obviously, this is a summer project for this to get done.
Well, the cafeteria is different than classrooms.
The cafeteria is different than classroom.
Correct. In other words, we could work in a cafeteria during the summer, even if they had school, we would just serve outside of it or work outside of it, get it from another building. But in order to do classrooms, you'd have to have the school shut down.
Okay, and we don't know how many cafeterias are still yet that are not fully air conditioned.
I don't think that, I think there's only a few. I think four is one, five is air conditioned, six is air conditioned, isn't six air conditioned? Eight is air conditioned, nine and 10 are air conditioned. So it's only four.
So it's only four. So four, right now, it's in the capital that it would get everything air conditioned.
Yes, it would get the, from our side, it would get the cafeteria, and from the grant, it would get the rest of the...
So basically, then your concern, all the cafeterias are already air conditioned, so we don't have to worry about that.
I don't think that is totally true. I think McManus is not, is not air conditioned. I, I think, I believe McManus is not, my, my daughter goes to McManus High School and without not believing her, I think that McManus cafeteria is not, not air conditioned. But the idea is not just to pick on cafeterias. I, I want the board members to understand that my comment, it doesn't go just to look at the cafeterias. I want the cafeterias, or we're looking for the cafeteria. The idea is to look, use this money for ventilation, HVACs as productively as possible. And instead of finishing half of two schools that may still need to upgrade, how can we spread the money more other schools? That is my only concern.
I have a question. With the ESER grant, if you could answer me, Kathy, is it, when, how often would we get this grant? Is it a one-time deal?
One-time.
That's it. So it's not a yearly thing, it's a one-time thing?
One-time.
So whatever we get now, that's how we have to, we have to use that money?
For this particular grant.
And figure out what we're going to do.
And we've got three years to use it, from now until 2024.
But it's going to take three years to put the project together and complete it.
And then also, remember, it's COVID-related, so providing proper ventilation in areas where children spend the majority of their time, which would be the classroom.
Well, cafeteria holds during longer period of time more children than the classrooms they, they do.
For shorter periods of time, though.
But anything over 15 minutes is an explosion. So that, that is just my comment. I leave the rest to the board members if they want to discuss it or they want to add something to it, but I really do not want to make sure that I'll take the meeting just to, to, to discuss that. That is just my, my, my personal opinion about it.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
You said earlier that you tried to do the high school and you could only do one floor and not the rest of the building. Why?
Because of the expense. The expense of doing it would only, we'd only be doing, because that was the original thing. When you, you know, you hear $6 million, it's like, oh, good, we'll do the whole high school. Well, we, we can only get one floor of the high school done for $6 million.
Six million, because to me, our high school is our most populated school.
Exactly.
All right? And these students, they, you know, you have these young adults in hot, very not ventilated, creates a lot of problems.
Part of our problem with the high school, Dr. Berghammer, is the last several boards prior to this board that came on, wanted to build a new high school. So every time we came up with a plan to do something to renovate the high school, the board would say, no, we don't want to renovate the high school because we're going to build a new high school, so let's do another project. So then all those projects got left, and now we're trying to play catch-up at the high school for all the stuff we didn't do in the past, in the past. So it was board-directed not to do it, and now we're starting to get it done.
I just think that our high school students are getting ready for college. One, we already have a school with over 1,600 students. In the high school alone, doing the high school is like doing three schools because of the population. So, you know, if you want to spread the money, as you said, we want to spread the money, we want to use it in a place where you have the most reach. And the high school, even if it's one floor of the high school, there's a lot goes on in the high school all year round by preparing students for college. There's a lot of different activities that go on through all the year. And...
I believe it's really hard to determine who do we work for, who we not pick for.
It is so hard.
It is really hard, but I believe that instead of looking for a architect right now, we should look for a consultant for to get clear information on how is it that we can use this money. I know that we have an architect. I know that they, this is a conversation that have, have already happened, but we are, December, in the month of December, the way it is, I don't think an architect is going to start the project. They're possibly going to start the project, to be quite honest, because there's no resolutions in January. And why not giving the district? Because this is something that the board cannot decide. The district more time to go and say, what other options do we have? How is it that a consultant can give us a better option to understand? And to have this board present to something that says, look, it's $5.5 million. If we're doing plan A, if, if we go to option A, this is what we can do. If we can do option B, this is what we can do. If we can do option C, what we can do. And perhaps, us being part of the, of the resolution, it will definitely make a better decision to protect the children and our school district. That is my, my beliefs.
So then we should do a feasibility...
What kind of a consultant are you talking about? Because the architect is the consultant that we go to to decide those things. I don't know what kind of consultant you're talking about.
But this board have not received any type of different options. We have not received option A, option B, option C. We only seen one option.
From this, you could get that from this architect.
Nothing is presented to us. I, I am here today to approve the contract of an architect to do a project without even having different options.
Was there feasibility study done?
Excuse me?
Was there a feasibility study done to see which was the best use for the money?
We don't know.
That's what they, what we did is we spoke with them and we asked them what was, what we could get for that amount of money and what, and those were the two schools that, you know, that they, they said...
That is just asking what you could get for the money, but is that the best use?
If you'd like your architect to come to a meeting and present options, I'm sure that they can, I'm sure that the architect can, can do that.
Right, but they have, you have to pay them to do it.
Right, you're going to bill you, they're going to bill you for it.
They don't just come up with a feasibility study for nothing.
Whatever their terms of the contract is.
And this is a grant, this is a grant that we're getting, and it's only going to be a three-year period, and we need to, you can, you can do whatever you want, but that's, there is a sort of a rush because we have to get it the plan, we have to get it approved by the Department of Ed, we have to go out to bid, and then we have to build it. That's going to take three years.
So with the ESER grants, I mean, my understanding is the, the funds have to be committed for expenditure. There's some, there's some ambiguity as to whether you actually have to pay the bill or just have a contract. But that, my meeting last night was just this, right? I told you, it was an HVAC project, ventilation, it came in way overbid, and the board had asked for options. Can we do a piecemeal? I mean, again, sometimes you get complications with duct work, it doesn't always, it's not so easy to just say, I'm going to do this one room and not do that room. But the, the ultimate result was the board's going to, I mean, the architect's going to come back and present those options. You can do this, this will be the cost. You can do that, that would be the cost. If you want to provide direction to, to Ms. Gaylord to ask the, the architect to provide options, I'm sure that can be done, but as, as she pointed out, we're going to pay for it, they're not going to do it for free, but at least she'd be in a position to make more informed decision.
Board members, let me just say this. As a board member, as a board member, I'd like to make a motion to, as a district, to pay for our architects to give us a good, a good options of what we can do with this money before we can approve this particular agenda item. And therefore, I'm making a motion to table item 13 for further discussion, and I respectfully ask for a second.
I second.
There's a motion on the floor with a second, any discussion?
We're not going to have another meeting until January, and you're not even...
We're going to let the board in January discuss it.
By the way, Mr. Rivas, this architect is the architect that did the five-year plan, and in the five-year plan was air conditioning for the schools, just so you know.
Point taken, Dr., sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Point taken, Ms. Gaylord.
Motion was seconded by whom?
Me.
It is a second. All right, with a motion on the floor and second, with no additional discussion, roll call, please.
Ms. Gilliam?
No.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
No.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. The next question in the finance report is in regards to item 17, item two. As per the auditor, he informed us the persons in charge for implementation of plans is the business superintendent.
is the business superintendent, and I see the assistant business superintendent as the person responsible for the implementation of number two. Can I get a little more clarification on that?
Okay, do you want?
Oh, I am in page 36, item 17, number two.
I'm sorry, what, I was writing this. Yeah, I know what he's, what, what is the question?
The question is that as per what was presented for the auditor, the business administration is the person responsible for the implementation of this plan. But I'm seeing here as a person responsible, staff accountant and business, assistant business administrator. Can we get a little more information what differs from what we were told?
Well, first of all, I oversee the two of them. The staff accountant takes care of the cafeteria account, and they, she works with the assistant business administrator working on the cafeteria account, and I oversee the two of them.
But isn't, is, and I'm going to ask for our counselor to provide us some guidance on this. Isn't the responsible person for the implementation of this plan, as it states, the business administrator? I mean, you as a business administrator, in my opinion, what I understood, should be the person responsible for this. Now, delegation part of that is totally different. That is the day-to-day work of this district, but I believe your name should be here as a responsible.
Edit. And I'll edit.
Yeah, I mean, it should not say staff accountant. It should say you, because you're a business administrator. Am I going anything outside the legal aspect of it, Counselor?
There's nothing illegal about, about adding it, no. I think the, the, you asked a specific question to the auditor about who's responsible for the five-year plan. He said generally, he works with, with the business administrator. At the end of the day, the board is responsible for the, for the, for the five-year plan. You know, if we want Ms. Gaylord's name on there, as she said, we'll put it on there.
All right.
I'll edit.
With that amendment to that particular item, I have to make a motion to amend it. Is that correct, Counselor?
Yes.
All right, in order to be legally correct, I make a motion to amend item 17.
Are we gonna amend anything else? We could do it all in one shot?
I don't know if we can amend anything else. Board members, do you have anything other questions about our finance report?
All right.
All right.
Is there a second on the motion to amend?
Second.
Discussion. Madam Secretary, roll call to amend, to add your name as a person responsible for implementation of the, the plan. Roll call, please.
I'm writing this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
What? No? Oh, I didn't hear. What is it?
I can't hear anything.
I can't hear.
To add her name.
Speak into the mic, please.
You're voting on an amendment to, on.
Yes. Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes, thank you. Chairman of the Committee of Finance, if you are, with no additional questions, if you would like to present a recommendation.
Finance Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I make a motion to approve items one through 12 and 14 through 18. Respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
With a motion on the floor being second, any discussion? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. We're gonna continue with Buildings and Grounds Security Report.
This time, the Buildings and Grounds and Security Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Ed for Approval, number one, two, three, well, all the way, number one through five. And it's basically all PTA stuff and some stuff from the principals asking to use the schools. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I second. With a motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? With no discussions on the floor, Madam Secretary, roll call.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel report. Chairman, will you ask for a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Mrs. Manganello? Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. We're going to executive session. Thank you. Back into general session.
Like the second?
There is a second, any discussion? Madam Secretary, roll call for a motion to go back into general session.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. Thank you, members of the public. I know it has been a long, long meeting today, and, and this is the reason why we did not want it to have double sessions ever. Circumstances had not, not led us on the other choi-choice, but to do that during this last, hopefully, last meeting. We never know what they tell us tomorrow, how things in the world changes, how things are. And we're gonna go back, and we're gonna now present the personnel report, and I ask our chairman of the committee to please make the proposals.
The Personnel Committee, upon the rec, oh, sorry.
Thank you.
The Personnel Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of School, presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for Approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and district receipt of sufficient state school aid and other revenue. I, I want the board to approve item one through 45, with the exception of four, number two. Of, of number, um...
Dr. Berghammer, there is no exceptions. We ask to approve all of them, and then the board members will vote on any particular one.
Okay, so I actually approve all of them.
All right, anybody, anyone on the board that will second the proposal to approve the Personnel Committee agenda?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? No discussion? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
I want to, is this when I do it, right?
You both, yes.
Yes, I have an objection, yes. All right, I would like to, with an exception of number four, number two. I want to approve all with the exception of four-two.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
I'm going to say yes, except for four, number two.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes, except number four, number two.
Mr. Rivas?
How did that vote, two, please?
You need five for four-two, I don't know.
So it failed.
I mean, I, I was, I was trying to keep track.
There's seven people and three of them, so that makes four.
Okay, I didn't, so three, okay. So it all passes except for four-two.
Four-two.
You need a majority of the full board for personnel.
Okay. Thank you, board members. I'd like to open this session. There is any new unfinished business that we would like to discuss tonight? I know it's late, but I feel that if I don't bring this up, it will be soon, I won't be able to be respectful, as I try to be respectful with all my colleague board members. I want to motion for the district to add in the, on the record that the Linden Board of Education expressed their appreciation for the loyal and satisfactory service during the years for Ms., for the two board members that are going to be exiting the board this year, for Mr. Gargano, as well for Ms.
Manganello.
Manganello. It's tired, I'm tired. Ms. Manganello, I, I wanted to make sure that although it might have been an oversight, it should have supposed to be a worse declaration here on the, on, I believe, what, what committee will that be, policy? I wanted to make sure that it is in the correct committee, but we needed to make sure the recognition to our board members, the recognition to our members. I know that it doesn't fall on personnel.
Can I go on the education?
I, I should go into, I believe it is proper to go in the education minutes, where we can recognizing the work that our board members have done during three years. Being a board member is not easy. Being sitting here is not easy, and many of us who have been here and who are here today understand that this is the sacrifices that we do, and we cannot finish our year without making sure that you're recognized and you are put on record that the Linden Board of Education appreciates the job that they have done. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna ask my fellow co-members to please join me to give them a round of applause. So I make the motion to include this on the record, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, roll call to include the recognition to our board members on the, in the record.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. Thank you for great years here in the board. Any other type of unfinished business? I believe we haven't completed, get detailed information about the meeting, TV meetings, so, what situation about the meetings. I, I received some sort of information telling me how it was, that the resolution was changed, we were going to talk about the resolution. Is there anything that the board members wish to go over again about this particular item, or we can continue to talk about it as the next following months come in? I asked board members, I, I wasn't here during the month of July, so...
We discussed that they would be, that they're taped and given to the, the TV. Can you fill us in? You, you told us, right? It is.
So I, I will ask our counselor, and the last meeting, actually, either was to revise the proper as it was before. Do we have any?
Yeah, we, we spoke to them, and, and we had a couple of conversations. I don't have a clear resolution on it yet, but, but we're working towards that, and I'll continue to work with the, the folks over at City Hall to try to get that, get those up and running as quickly as possible.
We owe it to the citizens, we owe it to the, to our constituents, and I'm just going to keep saying to all of you, this business will not be closed until we get it resolved, so I would like to thank.
Excuse me, they're not on the television?
Huh?
Brad sent us an email and said they're on Monday through Friday at 5:00.
That is not the decision we were asked. We asked us how does it was before. We, we couldn't have, find out what was the before process of the after process in order to make a right resolution. And that was the reason why we asked our counselor to go back to any previous resolution, what the meanings are, because they were concerned, or the meaning should have comments, the meaning should not have comments, the meaning, and that was more about the comments than anything else. They are being aired, but not necessarily as, as it was before, and that's something that needs to be clarified. I don't have any other new unfinished business. Board members, any new unfinished business? If that's the case, I'm going to ask for your comments, and I will start with Dr. Berghammer.
I want to wish all the, everyone, wonderful Thanksgiving, and a great Christmas, and I look, and look forward to the new year. As a board member, I understand that we try to make decisions, not all maybe the right decisions, but we try. We believe in the school system, we believe in the children, we believe in the parent, we believe in our city of Linden. And I hope that we will get more right than wrong when we make decisions. I want to thank you for coming to all the meetings and listening to us, and let you know that we have the city of Linden, parents and students' best interest at heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berghammer. Ms. Thomas?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for attending this evening. I'd like to start out by thanking School 5 for allowing me to come into the classroom and read to pre-K classes and the kindergarten classes. It was such a great time. Students really enjoyed me reading to them, and I really enjoyed them. They had lots of questions, and they were very busy, and it just was very heartwarming. I'd also like to thank you all for allowing me to serve as a Linden Board of Education Commissioner. For the past 11 months, I've learned a great deal about how the Linden School District is operated. I stand on a promise I ran on, which is putting children first. The decisions that I've made have solely been to put children first. I will continue to ask questions, I will continue to do what's right by putting children first, I will continue to keep the fiscal responsibilities of our Linden taxpayers at the forefront of our financial decision-making. I will also continue to hold people accountable. I encourage parents, taxpayers, teachers, administration, everyone, to reach out to our board, and also to the administration. If there are any needs that aren't being fulfilled or met due to operational inconsistencies, please do not hesitate or feel intimidated, and not contact us. This board doesn't stand for that. I'd also like to say, I had the opportunity to attend the Women's and Leadership Breakfast, where Dr. Hazleton was a panelist, and she, she was a speaker. It was really interesting to hear her story and very inspiring. Some of the things that I did find out were very new, and I just didn't know that, Dr. Hazleton. I know the transition into being a superintendent during a pandemic wasn't easy, isn't easy. And as a board, I feel like we need to make sure that Dr. Hazleton is set up for success. We all play a hand in making sure the school district is successful. Because things are usually done one way, doesn't mean that it's the right way, and all things aren't a one-size-fits-all. So I just feel like we have to do better. I'd also like to welcome our newest members, though they did have to leave, two of them. But this is Pino, Ms. Centron, and Dr. Berghammer to our board. We're glad to have you here, and thank you for running and believing in our board. And to Mrs. Manganello, we've only been working together for about 11 months, but it's been a pleasure, and thank you for all of your insight. We may have agreed to disagree on things, but it's been a pleasure.
I appreciate that, Ms. Thomas.
No problem. I did have some other things. Thank you to Dr. Olivero in School 4 for the presentation. Congratulations to our ROTC and to our retirees. I also wanted to make a comment on the trainings. We did approve some people to go to the training and the expo in Atlantic City last meeting. So these were additional add-ons. So we do have people representing, you know, the district, and we'd love to have all of them there. And though I know students will not be left alone in the classroom, but we also don't want them piled up into a gym where we've seen three classes on one teacher, there are a lot of issues there. I pray that everyone has a safe and happy holiday, and thank you for coming out this evening. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Ms. Gilliam?
You guys are looking at me. He said my name?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening. Before I start my comments, I just had a question for you guys. We, we literally just came from personnel, and there was no discussion about voting down the vote that you guys did. We all hear and know that we have a shortage of teachers. This specific individual used to be a paraprofessional. She speaks three different languages. We actually need a secretary in the admin office because one has left, so there's a shortage, and you guys voted it down. So I'm kind of confused to why you guys did that.
I'm going to advise you not to discuss personnel out in public.
That unfortunately, I will take that as a comment, Ms. Gillian, but questions cannot be answered once. Every board has every right to vote the way they, they understand that they got to, they got to vote, so it is in the the responsibility of every board member to take on the decision. I understand where you're coming from. I'll take that as a comment, and we will take it as a comment, but we cannot discuss personnel. Unfortunately, you may not get an answer.
So how can we revisit this?
At this time, the, we are into, we could have done that before, but we are in the comments. So there's nothing that we can do at this point, I believe. I don't know, the counselor, is something that I'm missing?
I mean, anybody can make a motion at any time. Just because something fails doesn't mean you can't bring it up again. But there should be no discussion out in public regarding the issue.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, what would you suggest that I do?
I'm not suggesting anything. I mean, if you want, if you want, if you want something to be reconsidered, you can always make a motion to have it considered.
Yeah. Can I have it reconsidered?
It would, I would just do it as a new motion. I wouldn't make it as a, again, I don't want to get too into the weeds on Robert's Rules of Order, but.
Then I would say I would like to make a motion to reconsider item four, number two.
I would just make a motion to, for that appointment. I don't have it in front of me. Item four, number two. Bear with me. I would just make a motion to appoint that individual to the non-certified secretary position.
Does anybody seconds that motion?
I second.
We have been said there is no discussion. Every board member has the right to place a vote. But as secretary, there is a motion on the floor being second roll call.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
No.
Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
No.
No.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
It is not about not reconsidering or not appointing anything. It is about the conversation that this board has, and it makes us look very ridiculous to go one motion to go to another. I will have to say no.
Motion fails.
Ms. Gillian, comments, please.
We don't look ridiculous, because we look ridiculous not appointing people that we.
The motion has failed.
I'm still making a comment. I can make a comment.
The motion has failed.
It's okay, it fails. I can still express my comments.
Please, please do too.
We look ridiculous not appointing people who qualify for positions. We've had the LEA president, we had a parent, talk about another individual that actually qualifies for a position that is still empty, that we do not vacant. And the only reason why I said something about the grilling is because we continue to grill people that actually deserve positions. And the thing that is disturbing is that if we're in public, if we are in public, then that's one thing. But when we're in personnel, that is an opportunity to ask questions. When you don't ask questions, and then you come out here and you vote and you don't give an explanation, it is bizarre. And I would like answers. So then now you voted to support something, and all of a sudden you voted against it. It's confusing. And she is a dedicated employee who is a paraprofessional. Paraprofessionals get $17,000 a year, every single year. They do not get a raise. So it's bizarre.
We're listening to your comments. This is part of your comments.
That's fine, that's fine.
And it's not bizarre not to offer an explanation. If you were saying it's bizarre not to discuss it in closed, that's one thing, but personnel discussions are to be done in closed session.
I'm okay with that, and I understood that.
Not out in the open. I just want to make sure that we're not violating anybody's rights as we continue to refer to individuals in specific positions in open when these individuals arise and do not express an interest in having it discussed out in open.
That's fine. The thing, my only issue is, is that this, something transpired in public that did not occur in private. So I was confused, that's all.
Understood.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to congratulate Mr. Bandinelli for his 22 years of service. Thank you for being a great teacher and dedicating years to our district as well. You were a wonderful history teacher and a coach as well as a VP. I can't thank you enough for all that you have done for our students. I pray that you enjoy retirement and pursue any other passions that you may have. You will truly be missed. I'd like to also thank Mrs. Bush for her dedication as well. I really appreciate your hard work and your faithfulness to our district. I want to take the time to thank Dr. Olivera, School Number Four staff, and the amazing performance of their students. You all are super talented, and it was great to see you all tonight. I would like to congratulate School Number Five on their achievements for being selected as a national ESEA distinguished. I also want to say that I am beyond grateful to be a board member and to have served with Patrick and Mary Anthony. Patrick, thank you for your dedication and your sense of humor. I want to thank you for your commitment to the district and never being afraid to say exactly what you were thinking. It has been great to work with you. Mary Anthony, this is truly difficult to, for me to accept that you're not going to be here anymore. I want to thank you for being an amazing board member. You are an inspiration to the girls in this district on what a strong, educated woman should be. Genuine, righteous, loving, passionate, outspoken, and confident. You serve your community with grace and honor. I want you to know that you put in the work, the blood, the sweat, and the tears into this community. It has all been for the better good. This board is going to miss your fire and your work ethic. I wish you nothing but the best. It truly has been a blessing to work with you.
Thank you so much, Senator.
You're welcome. So again, I say thank you to Patrick and Mary Anthony for being a board, for being board members and outstanding examples for our community. I wish you nothing but the best and in your future endeavors. Lastly, I would like to thank you all for coming and expressing your concerns. And I want to wish you all nothing but a healthy, happy holiday and Happy New Year's. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fleming?
I would like to say Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and congratulations to School Number Five. The board meeting was long, a little longer than, than normal, so I apologize for being a little absent-minded in the moment. I want to say thank you to Ms. Manganello for her service on the board. This is a volunteer position, and you really do have to care to show up and stay till 11:30 at night and try to do the right thing in every meeting and, you know, work from your heart, which I know that she does. And, and Mr. Gargano. It's, it is work, and it's frustrating, and it's scary, and at times it's, you know, confusing. And you want to make the best decisions, and people don't agree, and, you know, so it's work. And it's work that you have to do because you, you, you love it, because you love to volunteer, and you give your, your, your time freely for others. So thank you for your service to Linden and the children, to the Linden Board of Education. And that's all I have to say. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mrs. Fleming.
Ms. Manganello?
Good evening, all. I'd like to start off by wishing Mr. Frank Bandinelli and Ms. Susan Bush very happy retirements. I met Mr. Bandinelli while he served as VP at Linden High School. His dedication and his passion for the school just spoke volumes about him. Mrs. Bush also, para at Linden High School. I've heard so many wonderful things about her. I do believe she also worked at School Ten and School Number One. We thank you for your years of dedicated service to our district. Congratulations and enjoy all your future endeavors. Next, in celebration of American Education Week, I'd like to acknowledge some special achievements amongst some, amongst the many that stand out in our district. Congratulations to School Number Five, Principal Dr. Laura Scormadella, and to all her teachers and staff members. School Number Five has been selected as a national ESEA distinguished school by the New Jersey Department of Education in recognition of the success of its education programs and progress of its students. As a 2020 National Blue Ribbon School, we are all very proud of you for your stellar performance. Another honorable mention is McManus Middle School, which was selected recently for an arts program which promotes global understanding. MMS has been chosen to take part in the United We Create Project, whose goal is to promote understanding between Muslim and non-Muslim students in grades K through eight through the arts. The District of Linden, always being a district which values and celebrates diversity, is leading the way with these projects which improve understanding of connections and shared values among different religions and cultures. Congrats to Principal Atiya Perkins on the selection of this program, and wish you great luck in its success. Next, I'd like to acknowledge the winning team in Seoul Middle School's first academic tournament of the year, organized by social studies teacher Michael D'Amato. Congrats to Natalia Prasner, Zahim Harris, Aram Hussein, and Jamie Pilati. Keep up the great work. I know Principal Gwendolyn Luang is very proud of you. There are so many accomplishments here. I don't, I would be here all night, but I'm going to acknowledge a few more. I'd like to acknowledge three Linden High School students who were awarded scholarships to study with the Hoai Shu Chinese School in Edison, New Jersey. They will be learning Mandarin Chinese throughout the school year. Congratulations to Principal Yelena Hori for her students. Linden High School Chinese teacher Mrs. Linlin Hu, who I know and love dearly, she's wonderful. And her students freshman Ashley Agbatagrabs, Trinity Ellis, and Abigail Armstead. Keep up the great work, girls. I know Abigail loves Chinese, so this is such an honor for her, and I wish her greatness. There are so many other great things to mention. But like I said, we will be here all night. If you look at our Linden Celebrates newspaper, you'll see so many highlights. Some of them that I wanted to mention was our ROTC, who marched in the New York City Veterans Day Parade. Our talented Linden High School Drama Club, who just performed the Willy Wonka and the College Tour. School Number One, who raised $800 for childhood cancer after Alex's lemonade stand. Mrs. Rokako's fourth grade class at School Number Nine, aiming to break records of collecting 324, more than 324 sets of pajamas this year to give to children in need. Please donate by December 9th to School Number Nine, Mrs. Rokako's class. I could go on and on. These are just some of the outstanding things we do daily here in Linden. Reasons which have made me proud to serve as a Linden Board of Education member for the past three years. Today sadly makes my last meeting in my tenure. As a board member, I have done my best to serve with distinction, fight for our students and staff, and always use my voice to promote the integrity of the elected position I swore to undertake. I am proud for the accomplishments we have made as a board in the past three years and in the promise to the taxpayers of Linden of keeping a 0% tax increase while I served in my capacity. I'd like to thank my team members, Mr. Gregory Martucci, previous board member, Mrs. Shenator-Gilliam, who I love very much, previous VP, Mrs. Cardozina Kozak, and to also Mrs. Raina Martucci for your valued support, experience, and guidance. I'd like to also thank my team members I ran with, Mr. Patrick Gargano, who is also finishing his tenure with me, and Mrs. Doris Johnson, who was a previous board president, for fighting with me the good fight. And Patrick, thank you so much for always being a friend and being there. I will miss serving with you. I'd like to also thank Mayor Armstead for giving me the opportunity to serve on the board, and to the council members and Mrs. Armstead for the experiences that we have shared. I'd like to thank my family for their support, and to all the Linden constituents and stakeholders who voted for me and who will have believed in me. I'd like to also thank the parents and teachers and staff members I have met throughout the years, people that I've known already while I served as a PTA member and just volunteer in the schools. It's been a pleasure, and I've just been graced by the blessings that Linden is. I'd like to thank Dr. Marnie Hazelton, Ms. Denise Cleary, Mrs. Kathleen Gaylord, Dr. Karen Baldwin, and also a special thank you, oh, for being dynamic leaders and role models. I appreciate you ladies very much. A special thanks to Mrs. Donna Popoff for the hard work that you do. Thank you so much. To our newest board members, president, vice president, I leave you with the advice to always listen to your heart, ask questions, lead with integrity. I thank the District of Linden for the opportunity to have served in a district where I grew up and I went to school, a district of excellence and distinction. Thank you so much. Happy Thanksgiving to all. Oh, before I go, I also wanted to acknowledge, I don't want to forget, we have wonderful PTA members sitting here in the audience who are here, here, time and time again, dedicated. I've worked with all you ladies. We may not always agree, like I said to the board members here. You can't always agree. If you have a board where everyone agrees, then you're on the wrong board. You have to give each other different opinions and, you know, fight for what you believe in, and at the end, you, you know, you get the results. We're all here for the same thing. Thank you ladies so much. I appreciate you all. To Mr. Birch, who was here before, congratulations on your retirement, sir, as well, and your dedication to the community. Everybody who's here right now, Gary, Mr. McCall. I appreciate everybody here who has stayed, and thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. De La Cruz?
Thank you. I would like to congratulate our retirements, Frank B. and Susan B. Thank you for your service and dedication to our children and to your coworkers. Congratulations to School Number Five once again. I would, I wish we can clone School Number Five and make this throughout our system. That would make us stand out even more than we stand out when we do good things. Congratulations to our high school ROTC. Mr. Patrick and Ms. Manganello, thank you both. It's been 11 months that I've been on this board. I've learned from you guys. It hasn't been that long, but 11 months, we're still learning, and the next two years, I'll still be learning. And every day is a learning experience that I'll take at every meeting. I just hope they get shorter. 2022, I'm moving forward. I really don't have anything else much to say, but I want to say Happy Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much turkey, because you got to be back on Monday to work. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and hopefully next year our meetings get shorter and we just move along. Thank you all for being here tonight. Once again, have a safe and happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. De La Cruz. Thank you, colleague board members. You have said it all. You have recognized everyone in the district that needs to be recognized. We have spent long hours. We have spent a long time here in the, in the, in this. We have spent a long time here in the, in the, in these meetings. But I wanted to make sure that everybody understand. We are here trying to make the right decisions. And since I took oath in this chair, I said the intimidation is something that I will not pay attention to. We, the board members, can make decisions and the decisions that we, we make stands as the right of each one of us to make the decisions. And when we have among us people that not wanted to respect those decisions, it confuses everybody. And it's not necessarily to feel one way or another. It's my way as a president to make sure that I support and I understand why are these decisions making and I cannot understand in two minutes or I cannot understand five minutes, how is it that perhaps it was not discussed, came up to the table. It is not right, it is not wrong. It is just the way things are. We all have a right and we all have the decision. But I will say that I will make sure that this board gets respected. And when I say gets respected, it's that we cannot look like fools saying one thing and five minutes later changing it just because we didn't have the opportunity to discuss or present the discussion within time. To the members of the public who have came in to make comments, let me, let me just share with you that I understand every one of the sentences and every one of the things that you have said. But they are things that perhaps you are not receiving as same as we are receiving. There are things that perhaps you have not been in the conversation that you have, we have been in the conversation and unfortunately things that we cannot due to the confidentiality of things as we, as we as board members can come up here and say in open, public. It is not about being against training of our teachers. It is about our children. It is not about making one appointment with the other. It's a my, it's about making the right thing. Going back and see that we doing things in the legality of it. This board has been doing things outside the legality of it, as I understand. And I cannot continue to keep doing the same or supporting things that they are not within the legality of things. There are many things out there that we are not going to agree, but we're going to agree to disagree. And I'm going to say that it may be just this is my last meeting as a president, but I want to let you all know that I, I have served this chair with ethics, something that I really ask all board members to have. I want you to know that the decisions that we make is not, is not to put teachers and children against each other. The decision that we make are with, are made with the intentions to look at the best days for the district. And our district has problems. Our districts needs to get fixed. Our district needs to be working in collaboration with the board, something that previous board may have not done so. And I want to make sure that you, as my constituents, know that we need to get better. We want to get more school files. We need to get better. We need to hire the right people to the right places. We need to have processes in place. We need to bring people to the training. We need to have a process in place. We need to make sure everyone has the right to do so. Ladies and gentlemen, there are things that you may not know and there are things that, things that you might never know. But I assure you that what I know about the conversation that I have with my colleague board members, we're not here with an agenda. We're not here to try to show anything that we are best or we are worse than anybody else. We're here to work for the future of our children. I am here to work at least for the future of my two children that not only gave me a presentation, that they have not even given me a home and I came to see it here and that I'm so proud of them. And it's, it's for them that I'm trying to make that this district is run correctly and with ethics and with processes. There is a lot to do. This board member, this boards, everyone in the board and including the board members that come, we have a responsibility. And the first responsibility is to make sure that we work towards the benefit of the district. It's not putting our teachers against our students. It's not putting us against the teachers. It's not us apologizing for trying to make decisions that with the information that we have, we believe is the best decision. But I will assure you that as a president, I will, I'm support each one of my colleagues. But in two minutes, I cannot understand what happened and I'm not going to make a decision that is going to make, make us look not as a cohesive org- uh, organization. And there is something that we will discuss and we will have the conversation among us. Happy holidays, safe and a happy Thanksgiving. Congratulations to the ROTC group. My kid, they graduated from Linden High School, West Part of the ERTOC, and I know how sacrifices they made to wake up at five AM in the morning. I want to say that they are true heroes, uh, how did they form themselves? I, I much gratitude to the ROTC program, although I felt that our childrens really start very early knowing the responsibility of waking up early. And we know it's not easy, especially then that they get in education after training and then after class, they stay to train even more. I can tell you as an adult, I'm being up since four thirty in the morning today and I feel it. I'm, I'm tired. Imagine your children that they need to train, run, study, go back and train and run, go back to home and do homework and then try to do the chores at home and make sure that everything that they do in order to come back and be the best they can. It's not easy for them. If it's not for us adults, it's not easy for the children. But thank you for the ROTC group. Thank you for every other group out there. Thank you to our band. Thank you to our cheerleaders. Thank you to our basketball team. Thank you to our great soccer team that we have. Thank you to our football team. Thank you to all of you. This is the time when we say thank you. And I said the time when I said to you, the constituents, thank you for putting us into perspective. Because your comments are very important. But there are few things that we may agree or disagree or there are few things that we cannot even go further to the discussion. All I'm saying is keep it, keep keeping us in that loop. Make sure that you tell us the things that we want to say. We are not to take anything personal because at the end of the day, your comments is going to make us greater. Thank you very much, all of you. Thank you to our district. Thank you to Dr. Hazelton. Thank you to Ms. Gaylord. Thank you to Dr. Baldwin. Thank you to all the teachers, paraprofessionals, uh, assist, uh, substitutes and, um, for our people in maintenance. Thank you, everybody. But we have as a board members a mission. And our mission is to work with the superintendent to make sure that what worked twenty years ago can revise because it might not be working now with the pandemic and the situation that we are. We are learning. Everything is a learning experience. Thank you, Ms. Manganello. And I'd like to thank you, Mr. Gargano, in hi- in his absence, to being board members and to all of you, happy holidays. I make a motion to adjourn this meeting. I'll respect for you for a second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer? Mrs. Manganello?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. Meeting adjourned.